I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Osteen.
Here.
Alderman Marose.
Here.
Alderman Ross.
Here.
Alderman Rucker.
Here.
Alderman Schuman.
Here.
Alderman Becker.
Here.
Mayor Harmison.
Here.
All right, move on to mayor's communications. We do have one tonight. It's a proclamation for the National Aviation Day, August 19th, 2022. Whereas National Aviation Day was first observed in 1939 by President Franklin D. Roosevelt, and whereas August 19th is the anniversary of Oral Wright brothers, a younger brother Wright brothers renowned American aviation pioneers, and whereas citizens and aviation enthusiasts are encouraged to celebrate the history of aviation, remember how far we've come as a nation and support the future of aviation. And now therefore, I'm Michael Harmison, mayor of Osage Beach, Missouri, in cooperation with communities throughout our great nation, do hereby proclaim August 19th, 2022 as National Aviation Day, and encourage all Osage Beach families to take part in learning more about our country's aviation at museums and aviation events. In witness hereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause a great seal of the city of Osage Beach to be affixed this 18th day of August, 2022. All right, next, we're going to move on to citizens' communications. This is a time set aside on the agenda for citizens and visitors to address the mayor and board on any topic that is not a public hearing. For those here in person, speakers will be restricted to three minutes unless otherwise permitted. We do have a clock here to assist in that time. Minutes may not be donated or transferred from one speaker to another. Visitors attending via online will be in listen-only mode. Any questions or comments for the mayor and board may be sent to the city clerk at T-B-E-R-R-E-T-H at OsageBeach.org no later than 10:00 a.m. on the board meeting day, the first and third Thursday of each month. Submitted questions and comments may be read during the citizens' communications section of the agenda. The board of Aldermen will not take any action on any item not listed on the agenda, nor will it respond to questions, although staff may be directed to respond at a later time. The mayor and board of Aldermen welcome and value input and feedback from the public. Is there anyone here in person who would like to address the board? Mr. Beeler, if you'd be so kind to sign in, then you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, and to the board of Aldermen and staff, thank you for the time tonight. I'm here to address a couple of things. One, I just want to clarify a little bit with respect to the outlet mall and the developers. And number two, I'd like to make a couple of comments about your consideration moving forward with your TIF guidelines. And let me start there. Two and a half weeks ago, I was instructed by a client of mine to explore the possibilities of a development in the Branson area. So my first stop was in Hollister, Missouri, to the city administrator, and his name is Rick, and he's been there for quite some time. I can't pronounce his last name very well, but I'm going to give it a shot of zig and fuz, something to that respect. So during the course of the conversation, it was kind of interesting, I addressed him about what the city of Hollister's policy was with respect to TIFs. And he said they'll do up to $24 million of the project costs, not including SIDS, TDDs, et cetera, et cetera. And during the course of that conversation, he said that they were attracting a $400 million water park with about 600 acres or so that actually is going to be under roof. I thought that was pretty interesting. And Hollister is a very vibrant community. They're welcoming business to come to the area with open arms. Now, that being said, I think you all know that I've had some concerns about the process with the TIF with respect to the outlet mall. And I'd like to go through just a little bit of a timeline here with your patience here. On or around June 10th is when John Hanson with the developers asked Mark Spikerberg if he could start to prepare the redevelopment agreement. And he was told no, that that was going to be prepared by the city attorney. So now, keep in mind that we have a tight timeline, we need to have this turned around by June 27th. It was on or about the 23rd that we finally got the redevelopment agreement back in the hands of the developers for their review. During that course of time, we found out that Columbia Capital was retained by the city without cooperation and coordination with the developers to be the financial advisor to the city. Columbia Capital and Legacy Development have had a long history of three developments that did not come to fruition because of the problems associated with Columbia Capital. That's a concern. So now, we're putting at jeopardy 700 construction jobs, 700 retail jobs, $40 million in economic benefit to the city of Osage Beach. I'm going, wow. Do we not need the money? So then, on July 7th, since June 27th passed, I approached after the meeting, after the Alderman meeting, I approached the mayor and Mr. Rucker. I said, what do we need to do to get reconsideration of Columbia Capital? Can I finish?
If you can wrap it up in the next few seconds, that'd be wonderful.
And I was told that a motion needed to be made and seconded by board of Aldermen that had previously approved Columbia Capital. The following meeting, that did not happen. So then, I was told.
Mr. Beeler, if you would be so kind and respectful, every week that you've.
Just one minute.
Every week that you've been up here, we've extended the time, we've been very patient, and each time I suggest that, you go on and on and on. If you can finish this in the next 30 seconds, move on. If not, I'll be happy to meet with you any other time, but no more tonight.
Thank you. So then Alderman Marose made a motion, or she didn't make a motion, she made the comment at the end of the board of Aldermen meeting that she would like to have it put on the agenda for reconsideration of Columbia Capital. It was acknowledged. Later, it was removed from the agenda. So I have to question, quite frankly, why it constantly changed? And in addition to that, I understand there's two developers that have expressed some interest in the outlet mall. None of them have contacted me. None of them have made an offer. None of them have asked for any financial information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Please come on up, and if you would, sign in.
Hi, everyone. Everyone probably knows me, but I'm Susan Ebling. I also chair the planning and zoning committee for Osage Beach. I'm a third-generation local. The outlet mall property is on my family's farm. We're the ones that sold it to the outlet mall. So I have a vested interest in the city, in the mall, and in life in Osage Beach in general. I also sell real estate as a living, so I do this every day with people. I have to sell our city to people. Seeing the outlet mall on 50 acres of ground, almost blighted at this point, on purpose, Simon did that on purpose, they purposely did not renew leases to empty it out, to get it ready to sell, I'm told. Simon is actually in the black. They're not hurting, they're not getting rid of it because they need the money. I will tell you that our TIF, I did a little of my own research as well, our current TIF policy, as far as I've been able to research, is one of the most stringent, if not the most stringent in the state, and I would vehemently oppose any discussion that makes it more stringent. We're already chasing developers away, I can tell you, because I work with them every day. I was working with a huge developer who was going to put a giant development off of Jeffries, where Lakeport is, where Idle Days used to be. And when the outlet mall tanked and he found out you were going to discuss changing the TIF, guess what? He said, bye, don't want to be a part of Osage Beach if this is how developers are greeted. I got to tell you, it's really disheartening and upsetting to me, if you can't tell by my voice. I think that having a local family as part of the interested developers for the outlet mall is a plus. And you know why? And I can say this with my whole heart, because when you have been raised here and been here for multi-generations and seen the changes for decades, you really want the best for the city, and you want it to grow, because if we don't grow, we die. Okay? And I can tell you, I know one of the two developers who's supposedly interested in the outlet mall, and his MO is to let something go, he'll say he has interest, he might even write a contract, but he won't close on it. You know why? Because he's going to let it sit there and get worse and worse and worse until you just hand it to him real cheap. Is that what you want to do? Let it sit there for years like it is? Because that's what's going to happen if you change this TIF policy. I would request that you would change the TIF policy to be more friendly to developers. 25%, 50%? Hell, anything's better than what we're doing now. And if you seriously are really considering making it more stringent, I would call into question, why? Why? Who is behind this and why? Because it sure seems super fishy. It does not seem on the up and up at all, and it doesn't make any logical economic sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Mr. Foster? If you would, please sign in.
Most of you know me, my name is Dan Foster, and I'm one of the developers that tried to put something together here a month or two ago. Frankly, I'm not here because I did or did not succeed up there. Basically, I'm here because I've lived in Osage Beach for 50 years, and I see you going astray. Period. I will tell you, there's some good, talented, smart people on this board, but I will also tell you that you're getting bad information. And I've learned a lot about TIFs over the past couple of years, and some of the representations that have been made saying that TIFs are bad, that the city can get on the hook and have to pay and all that, frankly, they haven't been true. They have not been true at all. So I can only say that as you all consider saying no bonds, that's just exactly diametrically the wrong direction to go, because nobody can do a project like this unless they're hugely wealthy. They can't go and build it and then go apply for bonds. They can't do it that way. That's just the way it's done. And if you look all around the state and take a look and see how they turn out, number one, TIFs are almost, well, they're always good. But they're done in such a way that the bonds provide capital to start and to build, and not necessarily to get paid for what you've already done. Because if you already have the money, well, I don't think you'd be working hard to do anything, frankly, with that kind of money. But Osage Beach is always going to have this problem, I'm afraid, until you do something about that guy right there. Yeah, smile, you son of a gun.
Bring it on, Mr. Foster.
No, I'm just telling you, and I'm telling these people here, that he's giving you bad advice. He's taking you in the wrong direction. He is a deal breaker. I use the word not necessarily, that's not even my own term, I'm using the word of a very knowledgeable banker here in town, and that's his solid thinking. So be aware, be aware of that opinion of mine, and hopefully, we'll do something about it that'll make this place a little more attractive for development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Good evening.
My name is Chris Foster, and I just would like to mention when we're talking about the discussion that's on tonight's agenda for the TIF policy. If you guys would like to do your own research, feel free to do so, but in looking at other communities and how they handle TIFs and within their policies, Columbia, Missouri, and Branson, Missouri are both at 20%. Most communities are at 25%. Hollister at 24%. The norm is kind of somewhere in the 20s. Now, there are communities that are more aggressive, that are trying to grow their communities. Liberty, Missouri is one of them, they're at 35%, and that is for the TIF-only portion of the public finance sector. So these are, I mean, I just want to give you facts, so it's one that you feel free to go look those up, I mean, you can type online and look at these things and find them yourselves. So don't take my word for it, but when we're talking about the limitations of a 15% TIF policy here in Osage Beach, I have not seen one that is any more limiting than our current policy. And in making more limitations, I think would only further make it difficult for developers to come in to do substantial projects. So I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. If the board so desires, a consent agenda may be approved in a single motion. It's the minutes of the Alderman meeting, August 24th, and the bill's list, August 18th. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Marose, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Consent agenda is approved. All right, moving on to new unfinished business, we have Bill 22-59, it's ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, for additions and amendments to Chapter 405 zoning regulations, Article 5, signed, second reading. City planner, Carrie Patterson, please.
Yes, mayor, just real quick, this is the second reading, but I did want to bring to the attention of the board that we did address the issues that Alderman Schuman brought up about the ghost hour that was in there, took care of that, and then I did write in a new section that was more specific, or a new sentence that was more specific about the measure of the luminance of the signs. I will tell you that there was a small scrimmers error in the original packet that you have, so I am bringing that to your attention. The final sentence of portion 11 should read, readings to determine the level of luminance will be measured from multiple separate points, no greater than six inches from the face of the sign or primary light source. And with that, I would recommend approval of this with these stated amendments.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve second reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Osteen, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Marose, roll call, please.
Alderman Marose.
Yes.
Alderman Becker.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
Alderman Schuman.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Next, we have Bill 22-60, additions and amendments to Chapter 405 zoning regulations, Article 9, off-street parking and loading requirements and design guidelines and information packet. Again, this is a second reading. Planner, Carrie Patterson.
Yes, there were no questions or concerns on this portion, so unless there are any questions, we recommend approval.
Very good. Motion to approve, second reading?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Schuman, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Becker, roll call, please.
Alderman Schuman.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
Alderman Marose.
Yes.
Alderman Becker.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Last item unfinished business, it's Bill 22-61, it's an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending the Osage Beach Design Guidelines, Section 5, Roads, Streets, and Parking Areas. Second reading. You again, Carrie Patterson.
Yes, this is a request that we brought forward that changes the design guidelines. There actually was a question from Alderman Ross about the minimum radius for edge of pavement. Item K, actually, when Dave Adler took a look at that, they realized that they had made a trigger error and struck that through when it needed to remain as is. So in the new ordinance, item K says the minimum radius for edge of pavement at the entrance and exit shall be 20 feet.
Okay. Nice. Thank you again. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion, first, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Ross, do I have a second? Alderman Osteen, roll call, please.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Rucker.
Yes.
Alderman Schuman.
Yes.
Alderman Marose.
Yes.
Alderman Becker.
Yes.
Alderman Osteen.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to new business, this is a resolution and resolution-only of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, to adopt a revised policy for the consideration of tax increment financing proposal. City attorney, Ed Rettler, please.
Yes, this resolution was requested by a member of the board of Aldermen, and the revised policy has been adopted, prepared for your consideration with the Aldermen's input and request to proceed. I want to be clear on two things. One, it's a resolution, it is not a binding piece of law. It doesn't become an ordinance, it is something you all do not have to follow, it is a statement of your present intent, that is, this is what we think would work, okay? Two, inside the resolution, both for pay-as-you-go deals and for bonded deals, is an exception clause that allows the board to, without having to undo the resolution, accept any deal it feels is in the city's best interest, okay? You do not have to have a TIF policy. If you want to have a TIF policy, you've already got one, and that's the one that's there. Other than that, you know, they can't attack the seven of you personally, they need your votes, okay? So they attack us as staff. That's fine, we get paid. But I will tell you that a sensitive topic like this perhaps should also be, the more I'm thinking about it, just the subject of a broader discussion. Whether you do it tonight or not, I'm fine with it either way, I get paid either way, but if there is this much concern in the community about it, how you want to proceed is up to you all. The purpose of the policy is to tell developers, we're interested. Now, we don't know what we don't know about developers who say, no, I'm not going to come to them, I'm not going to talk to them, and I don't know every developer that's ever talked to the mayor or ever talked to anyone in my board of Aldermen. I'm not entitled to that information. But I want you to keep in mind, as you discuss the policy, that the purpose of the thing is to say, this is what we're comfortable with, and if you're not comfortable with it, we can change it. There's nothing in here that is required, okay? It is something that dates back to when Colonel Schmidt was on the board, and they first began talking about these policies. That said, the draft is out there, and if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer technical questions or policy questions or any other questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Alderman Rucker.
Yes, first of all, I want to say that the process to go through the, looking at the existing policy, was started by me. So it wasn't started by the attorney, it wasn't started by the staff, it was started by me. I'm the one that called the meeting and requested the meeting to meet with the city attorney, the city administrator, and the economic development person, sorry, I can't think of your exact title off the top of my head, but anyway, and Tara, to sit down and go through things that we felt, that I felt needed to be addressed and needed to be changed and needed to be made clearer and easier to flow. There is nothing in here that says no bonds, I don't know why you say that says no bonds, it doesn't say that in here at all. It allows for bonds. We actually made a specific new section that dealt with that and made it to where we could go into it. So those were the things that were made. There was also things in here that I felt needed to be changed because of, obviously, things that our most recent process wasn't followed and wasn't, and there was questions that came out of it. I've been involved in almost all of the other TIF programs that the city has had, except for the first one, and none of them had the cumbersomeness that this one had. So it was felt by me that things needed to be changed. Now, I'm not the sole author, I'm not here to take all the credit or all the blame, because there shouldn't be either one. It was a, I brought it about, and then the staff provided input as well, as well as some of the other Aldermen provided input. So that's, that needed to be said, I feel, just to clear some of the air. Now, if there needs to be a lengthy, more discussion on this, that the board feels that we need to have a workshop rather than expending extensive amount of time, that is, I don't have any problem with that, and that could be something we could do if there's felt that needs to be done. But I believe that the people out there that are creating a distrust and a displeasure for this haven't read it. And if they have read it, I don't believe they're understanding it the way it's supposed to be. And maybe we need to draft it a little bit clearer that way, but it's a friendly policy, it's not to be one, and if we're the only ones that are this strict in the state, why is it we've had the TIFs that we've had? And we've been told, I've been told personally by people in the Missouri Municipal League many years ago, that said, boy, that's a great policy you guys had. This is five, 10 years ago, when presentations were made at the conference, and they adopt, and many of those cities said they were going to adopt that type of policy, because they had nothing. So I think what we have here is a good tool, it's been used, and it hasn't been changed for a number of years, and that's why this process was started tonight, and that I brought it forth tonight. So with that being said, I would like to hear with any of the other Aldermen have anything to say about that, and maybe we either move forward with answering some of the questions in it, or have a separate workshop.
Thank you, Alderman Rucker. Comments or questions from the board? Alderman Osteen.
This is obviously a Pandora's Box for the board and for the community. I do have several questions, but before that, I want to make a statement. When changes to existing policy or ordinances are brought before me, I ask myself three questions. Number one, is this change required to clarify or expand on existing policy? Number two, is this change required to basically mirror or coincide with state or federal guidelines or law? Number three, is the change required due to situation or something that has occurred that negates or makes it necessary for us to revise that policy or that ordinance? If the changes presented in front of me do not meet any of those three criteria, obviously that warrants further discussion, including what is the motivation and the reasoning for that change? So with that being said, although I do support the majority of what we have been presented, I do have some questions. My first one is for Tyler Becker. I would like to know what role you played in the discussions regarding the changes to our policy, since you are the board-appointed representative on the TIF commission.
If you would, if you don't mind, address them to me, and then I'll throw them out to Alderman Becker.
Alderman Becker, please.
Alderman Rucker asked my opinion, and I concurred with what he had presented, which is what's in this resolution.
I just wanted clarity, because a lot of the information that's been thrown around here did not include you in that conversation. And once again, as the representative for this board on that commission, I just want to know what your role was. All right, number two, I would like to know, what was our source material or reference material for these changes?
Alderman Rucker.
Our reference material? I guess, number one, we had a policy that was created, you know, 15 years ago, something like that, and the suggested changes that are there were based on, based on things that occurred, and maybe things that weren't as clear in my mind to people, because they were interpreted differently than what has been interpreted in the past. So that's it. As far as reaching out and, well, I guess I should say one more thing, there is, the state statute was visited to make sure that we're still in line with the state statute. So I guess that would be a reference material. Other than that.
Okay.
Just what's been the practice and the history?
Then I believe we, as a board, are doing a disservice to the community in regards to economic development if we are not at least referencing the TIF policies for our surrounding communities, or those communities which would be considered our competitors, such as Branson. I would like to believe that we had based these upon reviewing other TIF policies to see if we were in line, or if we were setting policy that was so stringent that basically, instead of embracing economic development, we're basically pushing it away. I did some research myself on this, and I'm going to point out three specific areas, which, once again, I think it is cause for discussion, where basically, we are sort of aligned with what other communities are doing, that basically, we have put ourselves at a disadvantage. First of all, in our, get to this, in our policy guidelines, Section B, number four, the total amount of TIF assistance and all other public assistance requested for project costs should not exceed 15% of the total project costs, including all hard and soft costs, et cetera, et cetera. The Jefferson City TIF policy is 50%. The Branson TIF policy is 20. How did we derive the 15%? And on what basis or fact basically would we be more stringent than surrounding communities or what I would consider one of our competitors, which is Branson? Number two, Section B, number eight, to projects, additional consideration will be given to projects where the total project costs are in excess of $25 million, or the development areas where the project will be in callouts for further high-quality development. Branson's is 15, and they're a larger community, yet we set ours at 25. I want to know the reasons about how we derived that number. More importantly, I'm sorry, Section C, number four, no bonds or other public debt will be issued or authorized except upon substantial completion of the project, which requires at least the final construction and issuance of a certificate of occupancy for 80% of the proposed physical space, et cetera, et cetera. the proposed physical space, et cetera, et cetera. Jefferson City and Branson both say 85% for a certificate of substantial completion. We basically are wanting that project to be 80% completed, 100% completed, and move-in ready, whereas other projects are stating 85% partially completed or substantially completed. Once again, I question where we are deriving our statistics or our percentages from.
Can I offer a suggestion here?
Can I answer those questions?
Yes, sir, yes.
First of all, I believe every one of them has been in the policy for quite some time.
Correct.
So you're looking at me to answer that question?
I'm not looking at you, I'm throwing this out to the board, because I'm, I am basing my questions on other TIF policies, which we should have been utilizing, and you already stated that when we came up with these changes, we just based this off of existing policy. I'm stating, we should be looking outside the box at other communities, at what I consider our competitors, to say, when we issue our policies, we need to make sure that we're in line with what they are doing to make ourselves competitive, as opposed to policying ourselves out of the talk or the conversation for development.
These things are there. I went through it and looked at the things that I felt needed to be changed. Only thing I can respond back, as I have responded back to the board many times, these are our ordinances. Why haven't you looked at these things?
All right, I'm going to step in right now. I'm going to step in and give us-
Kevin, I don't hold you 100%-
Please, please, everybody. Order, please, order. I haven't used the gavel yet. This is not the place. My suggestion is, this needs a lengthy discussion. This is a very important thing for Osage Beach, a very important thing for our Aldermen, for our community, for our developers, for our investors. My suggestion is, we have a motion, or we let this die on the table, that we have an open meeting, roundtable discussion, and go through this point by point. The policy that's in place right now, the policy that all the developers have put in their TIF application has been in place. So we can go back and forth, why this, why that? Well, it's, what it is, it is. To change it, it's not going to be happening here tonight, in my opinion. My suggestion is, let's set a meeting in the very near future, let's go through this point by point, have an open dialogue, so we don't have to refer to me and me go back and forth and play defense and offense, and let's have a discussion. Everybody get their notes together, do your reviews, bring your questions. So I don't know if this is my suggestion, if somebody makes a motion that we table this and we set a date as soon as possible, but I don't think this is the time or place to be bickering back and forth, and quite frankly-
Mr. Rucker, we were not bickering. I'm just throwing out things that I saw compared to other TIF policies. It's basically stating, we should compare in what we are doing or what we're wanting to implement-
All valid.
-to what other communities are doing.
Correct.
So it's more or less an open question to the board.
Yes, and that's why I think we should have an open meeting-
Kevin, I don't hold you 100% responsible.
And I'm just saying, I think we should have an open meeting to discuss this item and this item only. And so that's what I'm asking somebody-
Being, even though Ed indicated that he's the presenter, even though he was the presenter, I'm really more the author, blame, our acclimate, whichever way you want to take it. But I would, I would say that, you know, if we need a motion or whatever to establish another workshop, I would make that, or if anybody else on the board wants to speak, and I think Richard had something to say.
Mr. Ross. Alderman Ross, excuse me.
That's okay. I just have a few thoughts and comments, but now that we're talking, I would just say, before we decide what the next step is, that each of us get an opportunity to provide some insights, so we can determine what the best next step is, if you don't mind.
Very good, go ahead, sir.
Okay. So a few things. First of all, I want to be, point of clarity. As far as Hollister, Missouri, that's 88 acres, according to the stuff. I'm sorry, there's been a lot of things said over the last couple of days, and I want to just make sure we're talking about facts. I read the Hollister, Missouri Economic Development Policy, and there is not a word "bond" in it. So some of these things that people are, as far as TIFs go, okay? In Branson, there's nothing much about bonds, and as far as any percentage, that's with SIDS, okay? So there's a whole lot of information being tossed around that is perceptually maybe factual, but it's best to read the policy, much like Bob did, and Bob's information that he spoke of was accurate. As far, Mr. Foster, as my neighbor, I just want to be very clear about Ed. Ed recommends things, but Ed doesn't make decisions, okay? Ed made very few things, the decision, comments that were decisions made on in the process, and I don't know that I would ever consider Ed a deal breaker, okay? Bottom line is, though, Susan, perception is reality, all right? And if we have a perception, developers think that we are trying to close the door on them, then we need to realize that. And one of the things that, when Kevin and I first discussed this, he said he was working, and I'm going to applaud Kevin for his efforts in trying to bring some clarity to this, that we need to bring and include the development community and get their input on any changes we make, okay? We need to be more inclusive, and to that degree, I would agree that we need to have another step in the process, okay? I will say that I have done, tried to do some research. Mr. Beeler has brought up information about pre-construction bonds. I think there's a lot of information out there, but I still struggle in general with the concept of pre-construction or pre-performance bonds. There's a lot of theory out there, a lot of people with opinions. I've talked to several people that I trust their judgment, and they don't think that it's a very good idea to support pre-construction bonds. With that said, I would gladly support another process. And maybe the first part of the process is, as a board, we adopt the guiding principles and then let staff go to work. In other words, we want a competitive policy, okay? Or we want this or that, all right? And that might be the best process. And I'm not saying that I think that is the best, but I think as a group, we can put our heads together and decide how to address this. But I don't think it's best, based on the feedback we've got, that we make any particular decisions tonight, other than to investigate further.
All right, thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
Alderman Ross, would you like to comment?
I was just going to comment, because before I even came tonight and reviewing all of this about the TIF, I was going to recommend that we have some type of a workshop, per se, because if it was up to me tonight, I would vote, no, I'm not going to do this, because there's too much information, it's too important, that we need to obviously go by and to try to make any changes. We've got to be sure that we're doing it the right thing, and whether it's more money or not, it's just the idea that we need to know, as you said, to be more competitive, and the fact that, the fact that we've just got to be more transparent and trying to make this as easy as possible for any developers. But yes, I'm all in favor of having a workshop, absolutely.
Thank you. Alderman Osteen, would you like to say something else?
No.
Okay. Alderman Becker, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I did agree with the changes Kevin has presented. Alderman Rucker, sorry. However, if we are, if the perception is, we are running off developers, we do need to take a different look at this then. I do agree with that. So I would be open to some sort of roundtable public meeting that's been suggested and see what everyone has to say.
Very good. Thank you. Alderman Schuman?
Yes, I would just like to say, I do agree. I think a workshop is going to be great. I do, again, want to applaud Kevin for his work on this, and I will say, a lot of times, kind of with the perception, we don't know what people do and don't like as much, until somebody takes the time to make the initial steps and initial presentations of, these are potentially the changes that we could make, and then you see what the perception is, or kind of make adjustments from there. So I think these are a really good starting point, and especially kind of to get feedback from the community as to what they do and don't agree with, and then kind of go from there. But I do like that an initiative was made and that we do have a starting point, and to know a few of the points that maybe are the ones we need to hone in on the most.
All right, thank you. Alderman Rucker, if you have anything else to say? Well, I'm going to make a couple of comments before we let this die in motion or let it sit. I hold this very near and dear to my heart. One of the things I ran on for mayor was pro-growth, pro-development, pro-entrepreneurship, getting city out and letting people do what they can do. With that, I've learned a lot about TIFs, I've learned about bonding, everything else. The frustrating part to me has been, throughout the process, is that we say one thing and then something else happens. And I did not want this played in the public eye and making the city look terrible. Now, we saw a few weeks ago, several concerned citizens, which I felt for every one of them, that came up here and said, we need them all. We want them all. We all want them all. People came up and talked about losing their health insurance. Nobody wants that to happen. We have a brand-new economic developer, a specialist, and we put him on it. We want that mall developed. With that being said, the process, the Columbia Capital, I'm not going to repeat everything, but there was a process. Columbia Capital was hired, not because of this guy. I was the one, when we said, we were told by Mark Spikerman of Gilmore and Bell, after the TIF Commission unanimously said they moved it forward. Move it forward means they put it on these people. It does not mean they want it, they don't want it. They said, send it to these people. Well, Gilmore and Bell, the very next day, said we needed to hire a financial advisor. We did not have one yet. We're being told we already had one. We did not have one. They gave us a name, and with the magnitude of this, we asked for a couple of other references. They gave us two more for a total of three. One of those three was Columbia Capital. We had no idea who Columbia Capital was, but we were told that they had experience with Legacy, the Kansas City partners with the Fosters. Since they had experience, and since we were up against a deadline per the developer's request, they wanted to hurry this thing through. My advice was, since they already had the experience, this go with Columbia Capital. Next thing we know, all heck breaks loose. Legacy does not like Columbia Capital. They're telling us the deal's done. We need to change our mind. The developers that are wanting a $64 million bond are telling the Aldermen who we can and cannot choose to look at their financial risks. Red flags on this end, I keep telling people, I try to oversimplify things. Could you imagine going in for a bank loan and saying, I need $250,000 to buy a house? And they say, great, we need to do a credit check. All right, what, who are you going to look at, my credit? Don't use this credit person. I've had problems with them in the past. Use anybody else, but not them. Who's the first one the bank's going to look at? I've worked with the Fosters. I've been rooting you guys on, the whole process. Dan and I had dinner, lunch, July 7th, after the deal was done. He paid their debts, clean slate, the deal was over, they canceled the policy, the program. We did not. They canceled it, we accepted it, there were $6,000 and some dollars left, they paid it, deal was over. July 7th, Dan and I sat there, and you told me, Dan, we would like to see this going again. I agreed. We have heard nothing, zero zilch from anybody, until the article came out yesterday by Lake Expo, saying how bad the city is and what, we're going to kill this deal forever. We heard nothing. So point being is, and they get up again tonight, and they say, look at the bad city, look what they're doing. Since July 7th, we've heard nothing. Why didn't anybody call my office and say, hey, I heard on the radio today, Legacy's out of it? I never knew that. Yes, I have had developers call me. Yes, I've had had developers say, we can't do anything until this. I've had developers say, they'd be happy to work with you. But you're with Legacy. So there's a lot of misinformation here. It's frustrating to me. It's frustrating when an article comes out from Lake Expo that paints a terrible picture of the city. I had a call a couple of days ago from the editor. Can you talk to me? I text-messaged him back three minutes later. I've got meetings the rest of today, meetings tomorrow. Can we talk tomorrow afternoon? That'll be fine. The very next morning, that article came out without talking to me. That's why people are frustrated with our national journalism. We want this project as much as all of you. It'll happen, but rather than not saying anything for a month and a half, give us a call, rather than pulling at the public's heartstrings and making the city look bad. I'm new to this process. I've worked my tail off to try to make this process work. Ed and I have talked, Gina and I have talked. This is not the bad guy. When I ran for mayor, I didn't know about this guy, okay? I've gotten to know this guy. He can make suggestions to the board, he can provide legal advice. It's these six people that decide. Mr. Foster, this guy has not torn this deal down. Myself, Gina, Ed, Mark Spikerman, worked out the redevelopment agreement. Redevelopment agreement, it basically is, the TIF Commission passed the policy, passed it on to the board, we hired a financial advisor. The next step is a redevelopment agreement, saying, okay, you want $186 million, you want this, here's our, here's our first draft of how we get there. First draft. Then, the developer, the developers can say, well, we like this, we don't like this, change it. Then we go to the second draft, third draft. Instead of that, they said, we don't like Columbia Capital, we don't like the first, the first draft, we quit, we're done. And every week, people get up here and say how bad we are. We didn't cancel this, we would love to have it start up again. The slate's clean, all we need to do is come up with a new, I'm sorry?
Application.
Application agreement, I'm sorry, I'm getting worked up here, because, because I care, folks. That mall will be redeveloped. I would love for the Fosters to be involved. I don't appreciate pulling at the public heartstrings instead of providing facts. So with that being said, I'm rooting for you still, but let's do this in a way that's beneficial for everybody. Pre-construction bonds very, very rarely happen. Very rarely. I kind of joked the other day, I said, hey, again, I'm new to this, so pardon, pardon my oversimplification, but what if I said, you know what, I'm going to go get my LLC tomorrow, I'm going to come to the board, and I'm going to ask for $20 million of pre-construction bonds, and then I'm going to go out and hire a bunch of people to redevelop this? Now, I know you're much more talented than that, Dan, I don't mean to, I know, but my point is, is they're asking for millions of dollars in startup, kickstart money, I think Chris said this morning, kickstart money, which does help in some, but when you, but when you hook your coattails on an organization that has so many legal problems currently, even the bond issuers are saying, we may not be able to buy these bonds because of the current legal issues. And I'm not saying they're guilty or not guilty, but this morning was the first time I had heard, and I heard on the radio, that Legacy is no longer part of this. We're cheering you on still, and if I can help, I will help. But just to be clear, we're not against the Fosters. This man did not kill the deal, and we would love to help, but there is a process, and if we need to sit down and have a discussion about that process, but please, don't keep coming up here every week, making us look bad, and that we're trying to make that place go dark, because we're not. With that, do I have a motion to table this, or-
Michael, I think we need to table it and make a motion to put it into a workshop?
Well, it's just a resolution, so Ed, we can just kill it, or just drop it and go ahead and move on to a discussion?
Basically, I think the board's consensus is fairly clear that you all want to discuss this at another time, so I think the cleanest way for Terra to make a record is a motion to pass this for tonight and to have the mayor, city administrator set, not pass as in approve, pass as in pass-
Pass on it.
Gina grimaced at me, oops, that was the wrong word. A motion to pass over, avoid, not do anything with, set aside.
But then how do we resurrect this as a workshop?
Well, that's it. And that's the other half of your motion, is, and direct the city administrator to set a workshop meeting at either a date certain or something like that. Alderman Osteen, the reason I've tried to avoid the word table is table as technical meaning under Robert's rules of order, and it can be different, I take something off the table, so it's just a motion to sort of set this over. How about a motion to set over as opposed to pass? Is that better?
Alderman Rucker, would you like to do that?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to set this resolution over and have the city administrator put together a workshop session as soon as she can.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Alderman Osteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Mayor, I can answer two questions for Alderman Osteen right now.
Yes, he has two answers for it.
First off, the 15% number dates back to 2008, when this policy was first adopted. It was the consensus of the board at that time. Where, how that consensus developed, I don't recall, okay? Second, the policies reviewed in 2008, there were several, the two cities that come to mind immediately to me, we looked at Independence and Liberty. Zero. And we'll certainly run down Branson, Columbia, Springfield, Hollister, and Jeff City, and get copies of all their policies and be ready for that for your workshop. No number in the policy itself is sacrosanct. You guys have the ability to change any of them. I'm sure Mark Spikerman at Gilmore and Bell will tell me if we're changing something that's going to mess us up under a state statute, but otherwise, this is your policy, and you guys can move those numbers anywhere you want.
All right, thank you very much. And the meeting, once it's set up, we will post Facebook, we'll post online, we'll public, and we encourage anybody and everybody out there to join that meeting. It'll be open to the public, it'll be online, and we'll be- It'll be open to the public, it'll be online, and we'll be happy to have your information. If you have any information you would like to have ahead of that time, feel free to email it to me. You can tell I'm a little passionate about this. We want this to happen, so we will be as open and honest and transparent as we have been, and will continue to be. All right. Next new business. Bill 22-62, an ordinance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with B&amp;H Welling Drilling Incorporated to cap the old residential well located at 5670 Rockwood Court in Osage Beach, using a grant from the Department of National Resources for an amount not to exceed $6,840. This is the first and the second reading. First reading, any comments or questions from the board? Oh, wait, we might as well talk about it. Mike Welty, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the board. So, earlier this year, we did receive a well grant from the Department of Natural Resources to plug the well located at 5670 Rockwood Court. The project was bid out informally due to the low cost of the project. The city received two bids, the low bidder is B&amp;H Well Drilling Services. Their bid in the bid tab is attached, and we have not worked with this company before, so I did check their references, and I found no problems. As the mayor stated, this is being funded through a grant, through the Department of Natural Resources. 75% of the total cost is paid for by DNR, the other 25% is paid for by the resident. So, in essence, this is a zero cost to the city, although we will need to make a budget amendment, because those funds will come to us, and then we will pay B&amp;H Well Drilling. So, there is a budget amendment that I believe Gina has set up to follow this. So, with that, I do recommend approval, and with just one last thing, the first and second reading is important in this case, because there is a deadline for the grant. This work has to be done by the end of September. And so, in order to facilitate making sure that I can get all the paperwork done, and get the contractor out there, and do it sometime within the next 45 days, I need this first and second reading tonight. Thank you for, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Welty. Any comments or questions from the board? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the first reading?
Some of.
Alderman Moros, do I have a second? Alderman Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, first reading carries. Second reading, Bill 22-62, an ordinance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with B&amp;H Welling Drilling to cap the old residential well located at 5670 Rockwood Court in Osage Beach, using a grant from the Department of Natural Resources for an amount not to exceed $6,840. This is the second reading. Any other comments or questions from the board? If not, do I have a motion to approve second reading? Alderman Schuman? Second one? Alderman Rucker? Roll call, please.
Alderman Becker?
Yes.
Alderman Moros?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
Alderman Schuman?
Yes.
All right, second reading carries.
Next, we have Bill 22-64, an ordinance of the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending ordinance number 21.78, adopting the 2022 annual operating budget, transfer of funds for necessary expenses for well plugging. First and second reading? This is the first reading. Comments or, oh, gosh darn it. Gina Woods, please.
Mayor, members of the board, like Mike said, this is to adjust the budget, and as he said, there's no direct monetary effect on our budget. Now, I do wanna say, we do spend staff time when these come up, but that's our way of protecting our well systems. So, we join in DNR in wanting to protect our water system. So, we do spend staff time on these, but no zero-dollar effect on the budget.
Thank you. Gina, any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve first reading? Alderman Ross, do I have a second? Alderman Schuman, all those in favor?
Aye.
First reading carries. Second reading, Bill 22-64, an ordinance to the city of Osage Beach, Missouri, amending ordinance number 21.78, adopting the 2022 annual operating budget, transfer of funds for necessary expenses for well plugging. Second reading, any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve second reading? Alderman Rose, do I have a second? Alderman Ross, roll call, please.
Alderman Osteen?
Yes.
Alderman Becker?
Yes.
Alderman Moros?
Yes.
Alderman Schuman?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Rucker?
Yes.
All right, second reading passes. We have two more items of business tonight, on a new business. Motion to approve the reappointment of Board of Directors to the Arrowhead Center Community Improvement District CID. The city administrator, Gina Woods, please.
Or Tara. No, I'll take it, I wrote it for her.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I did, I wrote it.
You're the originator.
I'm the originator. This is kind of a technicality, as you know, we have the Arrowhead Center Community Improvement CID, and a slate of successor directors must be appointed by the mayor and sent from the board, and at our last Arrowhead CID Board of Directors meeting, there was a resolution passed at the time to reappoint the expiring terms, and two city officials by title are on the board, President of the Board, Alderman Ross, myself, Gina Wood, City Administrator, and then Arrowhead Representative Melissa Hunter. We did have a mayor change, so Mayor Harmison will just by that resolution, replace the previous mayor, and will serve out the expiring term. But we, the three listed, need new expiring terms, which will expire in 2026, which is per the CID agreement.
Very good. Comments or questions from the board? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alderman Rucker, second. Alderman Becker?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Last item of business, a new business, motion to approve the disposal of specific items deemed as surplus property. Assistant City Administrator, Mike Welty, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Attached, you'll find a list of all the items that staff is asking permission to sell, scrap, or dispose of. Couple of specific notes I wanna make about items on this list. First of all, there are four vehicles that we are asking to sell on this list. Those vehicles are being replaced by the vehicles that were already approved by the board this past December, but have not arrived yet. So, those vehicles will not be sold until the replacement vehicles do arrive, but just as an efficiency thing, they're gonna arrive sometime in October or November, and I wanted to go ahead and get permission, so that when they arrive, I have the ability to go ahead and sell them. Secondly, this doesn't happen very often, but the city does have a piece of property that we would like to sell, that we no longer have a need for. It is a piece of property located in the Mimosa Grove subdivision, which is along Zebra Road behind Deerburgs. That piece of property is gonna be sold via closed bid. That will, sometime within the next few weeks, we'll be opening that up for anyone that wants to bid on that property, they'll be turning in bids to the city here at Osage, at City Hall, and then we will open those and work with the highest bidder, in this particular case, to sell that property. So, I just wanna make those two notes. Open to any questions, and I do recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Welty. Any comments or questions from the board? Alderman Rucker?
The property on Mimosa, how did we obtain that? That wasn't property that came to us because of obtaining more property for Rightofway or something?
Several years ago, I think we kind of redid Zebra quite a little bit, and that is a byproduct of when we kind of realigned Zebra, is what that is.
This is, I thought that it was the practice, when we took up a piece of property, and we ended up not needing all of it, that we first offered that piece back to the people that we bought it from or took it from.
We purchased three lots in Mimosa Grove to make them part of Rightofway. This is the piece of property that the board approved the mayor to sign the plat on, to create the lot and establish the Rightofway that we built within. So, we established a 40-foot Rightofway and created a lot. So, at the time, when the engineers went through and did the project, we had to buy all three of the lots in total, because they were very small, and buying a 40-foot strip out of them made them useless. However, you put a portion of the three remainders left, and it gave us a 12,000-square-foot single-family lot, which we owned straightforward. We did not take it.
I just wanted to make sure that, because when property is taken from someone or...
Not taken. We gave them money.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to protect the...
And again, that was the plat that came before the board, I think at the last meeting, that's created that lot that we're selling.
I just wanted to get that clarified. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Alderman Osteen?
Two questions. And I think you may have already answered the first one. So, this is a buildable lot?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Because, of course, my mind, it was some random strip of land, and very little desirability. Next question is for Mike, maybe, it's because I don't understand the process. Why are the police vehicles not being used as trade-ins to offset the purchase of the new ones? Why do we outright sell them?
Historically, we've always been able to get more out of them by selling them outright ourselves.
Okay.
If the board so chooses, and you want us to start looking at that as an option, it's certainly an option that's open, but we've always had pretty good success with the vehicles, with either using a local auctioneer, or using an online auctioning service, and been able to get, you know, quite a bit of value back out of them that way, and you just don't seem to get that same value in a trade-in.
Okay.
The only other thing with that, Bob, is...
Alderman Rucker?
With state bids, I dealt with state bids a lot, and when you're dealing with state bids, they don't allow a trade-in.
Okay.
And that's a state bid that doesn't allow it, because I did a lot of state bid process.
Okay, well, I said, maybe they don't understand the process, I was just curious on why it's not...
Yeah, that's just to clarify.
Because usually when you buy a new car, you're negotiating the trade-in value, what you're getting rid of, and just curious on how that played in. That's all.
Alderman Ross, did you have something?
I was trying to figure out where those lots were, and I'm on Canada's US, and I finally figured it out, but thank you. So, no, I don't, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board? All right. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Ross, do I have a second? Alderman Becker, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next, we're gonna go on to staff communications. City Administrator Gina Woods?
Well, I just come back from a few days off, so I'll be honest, I don't have much of an update. So, I'll pass.
Assistant City Administrator, Mike Welty?
One more comment I wanna make on vehicles. I know that I've mentioned several times in the past, that we have struggled this year to get vehicles, and most recently, we've been researching used vehicles, and I wanna thank Eric for helping me with that. And what we found is that the used market is just, they're just too high right now. So, what we've done is, we've made the decision to go ahead and get on Joe Mokken's 2023 list for not only the vehicles that we have already been approved for this year, but potentially the vehicles that we will be presenting to the board in the workshops later. Now, this list doesn't, it doesn't guarantee that we're gonna buy these vehicles, it puts us in line to get these vehicles sometime in 2023. So, there will be no other vehicles purchased this year. In light of that, the biggest problem that we have is one of the plow trucks at Lisi Fine, and I've talked to the street department foreman, Rob Long, and he has offered, if we need to, to let the airport borrow one of their plow trucks to assist this winter, in hopes that next year, we'll be able to replace that as we know we need to. So, we've kind of covered ourselves for the upcoming winter, not being able to replace that vehicle, that was really the biggest need. The second largest need was the one in the parks, and we're gonna try and let that ride over the winter as well, and we've done our due diligence and got ourselves on these lists, so that next year, when it comes time to buy some vehicles, we'll have the wherewithal to do so. So, just wanted to share that with you guys, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City Clerk Tara Barath?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
All right. City Treasurer Carrie Bell?
Thank you.
City Attorney Ed Rucker?
Haven't you heard enough about me tonight? One quick thing, I briefly reviewed the TIF policy, so you guys, there is one number in the TIF policy, I'm sorry, I've reviewed the TIF policy, there's one number in the TIF policy you can't mess with. That is the 23-year time limit. That's state statute. And there may be another number in there that I didn't catch, but all the rest of those numbers are policy decisions within your discretion.
There you go. Thank you very much. All right. Chief Davis?
We had a promotion in the police department. Officer Steven Reiner was promoted to corporal, and we have a recruit starting the academy on Monday, August 29th. So, with that addition, we're down two officers.
All right, very good. Building Official Ron White?
I have no updates provided, thank you.
All right, City Planner Carrie Patterson?
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor.
All right. Kevin Crook's not here, Michael Beal's not here, Ty's not here. Eric, Eric Gregory, Parks Manager, please.
I just want to take this opportunity to give the board an update on the Park Master Plan.
Hear him.
Can you hear me?
Go closer.
We've been working with Darren Barr, with Ballard King and Associates, and have finalized a survey for public input for the new Parks Master Plan. We plan to post that survey on the city website, social media, hopefully by tomorrow or early next week, which will also include a QR code linked to the survey for convenience. Plan to have the survey available to the public for three weeks. Darren, with Ballard King, will be at City Hall on the morning of September 1st, and he'll meet with the Camden Chamber, the Lake Area Chamber, the Tri-County Lodging Association, and the CVB for their input, and then be open for public input the rest of the day until 5:00 PM. Then, we plan to have an open forum on the board agenda for that evening, and for public comment, followed by an update to the board on the progress by Darren. We're hoping, and it's what Darren told me, to have a rough draft of the master plan by mid-September, and final draft early October, if all goes well, and I just encourage members of the public to please fill out the survey. We really wanna know what they want in their parks, and that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you much.
Economic Development Specialist Mitchell Moon?
Well, good evening, Mayor, and board, citizens out there. This past week, I've been meeting quite a bit with local community stakeholders, most specifically State Fair Community College, we have that resource here in our community. Yesterday, I spent quite an extensive time at their campus in Sedalia, but their sister campus here is in Osage Beach as well. I just wanna stress the wonderful resource that they are, and how lucky our community is to have them to develop, and I say the younger generation, I'm 23, that's my generation. What a wonderful resource they are, here in our backyard, helping creating workforce development, right here in Osage Beach, and all over the state of Missouri. I believe State Fair Community College services about 14 counties here in central Missouri, and for citizens at home listening, if you have an individual, a student, who is looking to go off into the trades route, into the tech school route, that's a wonderful resource for you, right here in Osage Beach's backyard. I toured their brand-new facility, I was, quite frankly, blown away by the technology that is available for those students to learn from, and the partnerships they have with industry leaders, and we're talking big dogs. We're talking Kawasaki, Union Pacific, Tyson, Cargill, you name it, the big dogs in the industry are partnering with State Fair, and leading to our students having a good-paying career right here in central Missouri.
Very good. Thank you very much. Moving on to the aldermen. Alderman Rucker?
Yes, Mayor, and members of the board, and public, I haven't said enough yet tonight, I've got a few more things to talk about. First of all, I want to thank the staff for the help that they did give me with the TIF and their work and everything there, and I think enough was said to that, and hopefully, if the board has some input, which I hear they do now, we'll get those in place, and we'll see what we can do to improve the TIF policy. Contrary to what some people might believe, that was my intent with it, when I dealt into it, as I do when I delve into ordinances. Second of all, I wanna let the board know that coming up at our meeting in the middle of September, we'll be dealing with seven ordinance changes that will be coming down the pike. Staff will be, individual staff members are gonna be looking at them over the next couple of days, and we'll be floating them out, but even though there's seven ordinance changes, five of them are very minor, two of them are ordinances that we didn't have, because we just didn't have them. We didn't have an ordinance that said how the sewer board make up West Smith City, we said how the Sewer Board make up West Smith City. We didn't have an ordinance that says how the Board of Appeals that, that needs to address issues with Ron Department. We didn't have an ordinance that addressed that. So we found some of those things. So anyway, so that's coming down the pike. Third, and I saved the best for last, is I made a mistake. It's not the first one, but I do, I do, I do make them. I, at the last meeting, I, I spoke some wrong information, and I want to clarify it. It had to do with the Clearwood, or excuse me, Clearwood Lane. I was relying on the memory. The memory's been pretty good up until just recent, I guess. Maybe that's my age. But, and also, I went back to my notes, and my notes, I misunderstood my notes, my notes, and, and somebody, and some other people. So I want to get that clarified out. I have went back over and revisited Clearwood, physically drove it, didn't rely upon Google, and didn't rely upon my notes. That was the first mistake. I'm not a techie person, that's definitely. But anyway, so there is houses over there that do front, front Clearwood. There's a number of them, matter of fact. And, and so that does need to be a road that needs to be considered. But also, when I revisited that, I, I, I found some more information that is rather interesting. And that is, this issue first came about back in 2013, when the city adminis, excuse me, the city engineer at that point indicated that the road wasn't wide enough for two-way road, and that it should be a one-way street. One-way, not two-way. Okay? And the second thing that was brought up at that time, according to my notes, was the, the other reason it needs to be one-way is because the openings on both ends are on hills, and it is very difficult to make a two-way entrance on both ways. So that, again, clarifies why it should be one-way. So with that being said, I think that's something that we need to consider. Also, at the, at a meeting last night, our city engineer, unfortunately, not our city engineer, our, our city engineers organization, Cochran, made a statement about the road that is different than what the proposal here that I have from them. So we need to get some clarity. If it's a one-way road, how wide does it need to be? Okay? I didn't get a chance to look at our guidelines today, because I had too much other stuff going on. But he made the statement that the road is only going to be 10-foot wide. Well, the proposal that we have here, or that I have, I don't know if the board has seen this, but that I have been privileged to be able to see, is 14-foot wide, and it's for a little over half a million dollars. So if this is a proposal here for 522,000, which we feel is too expensive, and it's for 14-foot wide, but yet he's saying that it's only 10-foot wide, there needs to be a clarity. And after driving that road, I am very concerned about making it any wider, because if we do, we're going to cut into some people's parking in front of their house. So this road does need some, some work. I'm, I'm, I was opposed to it at the last meeting because I had misinformation, partially my, I'm not blaming anybody. But anyway, so I'm now in favor of, of doing something with it. I don't want to spend a half billion dollars on a road that's short. I think that we need to revisit maybe looking at a one-way road, one-way, and narrow as possible. So I just wanted to get some clarity on that from, from where I stuck my foot, my mouth at the last meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry for, for the information.
I got something he wanted to say.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make a comment real quick. I was at the meeting last night, sir. I'm not sure where the confusion was, but it is a 14, the proposal is for a 14-foot road. If, if Eric misspoke last night, that was, that was a mistake. It's, it's proposed as a 14.
But does it need to be 14? Can we not get by with a one-way lane of less than 14, which would cut, cut this cost down?
We can, we can certainly talk about it.
I mean, what does our guidelines call for a one-way? Because our guidelines, unfortunately, calls for a one-way street to be only so much, and I don't know what that footage is.
Well, I, I was asked to bring some additional information back to the board on all of the private roads, which I am working on. I don't, I don't have it ready for this meeting, and it won't be ready for the ni, for the next meeting either. But it is, I am working on it. And I will investigate that as well, and we will, we will bring that back when we have that discussion.
Very good. Thank you. Alderman Schuman?
Just a few things. One, just a reminder, school starts next week, so the kids get to leave the house and go back to school. So just with that reminder that the buses will be out. Yeah, I know, right? The buses will be out, so be watching for the buses, making the stops that you're not used to. It may change your regular route for the day or what times you have to leave, and watching for all the kids going around. Two, reminder, the rummage sale, the sign-up for that ends September 2nd. That's always really fun. We've done it in the past, and it is fun. You get to see a lot of people. You can see a lot of interesting things, get some really good deals. But it's a fun thing for the city. And then the last is, I know Labor Day's coming up, and just a reminder, our lake restaurants and establishments, they don't, some people forget that they are still open after Labor Day, and sometimes that is the best time to visit them, because with the outdoor seating, the weather is a lot nicer. So just remember to frequent them, because most of them are still open through September, October. So just make sure we patronize our, our local establishments, because those are still really great places. Even if the pool's not open, it's still got good views.
Thank you very much. Alderman Becker?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Osteen?
I have two things. First of all, I would like to commend Kevin and Gina and Ed for the work they did on the changes to the TIF policy that were proposed. My comments regarding those changes were not directed at them personally. They were directed to the board as a whole, really to get us thinking about how our policy aligns with the neighboring communities, or what I consider our competitors, such as Branson. Because I did say in my comments that I support the majority of what has been presented as far as the changes. I just wanted to open up more discussion to see where are we so disconnected from other policies that we are losing business or, or not providing the best tools for economic development. My second comment, Mr. Mayor, you will like. I actually did this one before we came to the meeting, but the court of public opinion can be a lot harsher than the reality of the situation. So I implore our citizens to please base your opinions based on fact and not on perceived knowledge or fragmented stories. That is all.
I do like that. Thank you. Alderman Rose?
Several things. First of all, excuse me, Mayor, I'd like to commend you on your comments about being actually a representative of the board of how much we all want the outlet mall.
Thank you.
And I really, really do appreciate your strength in that.
Thank you.
Kevin, I should say Alderman Rucker, kudos to you, to all the hours that you have spent in going over ordinances. You've just been a real asset. Thank you for all your time. Absolutely. And comments to the Alderman Ross and Osteen of doing their due diligence, far more than I have. I know that. But I've certainly appreciated it and respected it. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alderman Ross?
So a few things. And first and foremost, is the, is some recognition for some of our frontline employees. We, we had a water leak last week down around Wilson Road and Enter Circle, and it was really affecting one of our residents' homes. And Zach Wilber, which I'm learning, I haven't met, but is our water foreman, and his group jumped in, took a while, but got it taken care of, and have communicated with our, the resident that was affected very well, and handled it. We've talked about customer service, and I think they handled it in a way that customer service was successful. And I, and I had not met or worked with Zach before, but Mike, would you make sure that Kevin, and I'm sure Zach's team deserves some recognition. I just don't know what their names are. Okay? But Zach and his team did a great job. Okay? And, and I think it's great that we, we can recognize our frontline folks. For the Mayor, I appreciate your passion, and you're willing to stand up to these folks that want to throw a bunch of things around that I don't believe are factual. And, and I want to just say two, one, two things to future developers. One, it's not best to walk up to someone that you need help from in a business situation and start the process by telling that partner that you need their help, but their processes and policies are all jacked up. And that's exactly how this started. And it's too bad that that group is not here. Along with that, it's very good to be forthright with who exactly the group is that is coming to see you and talk with you. That was asked for many times through the process, was promised but never delivered. And so all I can say is, is that if you want somebody to partner with you, it's best to try to work with them instead of start the process by telling them how wrong they are. All right? When it comes to these TIF processes and developments, I would just say this. I personally, I don't want to speak for the board, believe that the best process is to approve a plan and then develop an agreement. They wanted an agreement so that we could develop a plan. That just seems backwards to me. On the next subject, I wanted to recognize, I'll change subjects. I want to, I want to recognize Mike for his work with Grand Harbor and the pool issue that we've had. And update the board that the next step in the process is we have now a, what I believe, and I haven't seen any feedback to, but we have a scope of work that we've come to agree. We will present it, Mike, I think has, I did not see it, but Mike told me he has sent it to them. They may or may not agree with that. And when they, if they don't agree with that, then we may have to redo some unique processes with some vendors to determine what the value of that scope of work is. If they do agree with that, then probably they can take that out to bid, and we're not sure yet. But that's where we're at in the process, and just wanted to update you all with that. And then on a more positive note, the Wing Fest is September 14. I hope everybody can come. And that's all I have.
All right.
Is it Regalia?
At the Regalia Hotel.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. I've got, just have a few things. First of all, congratulations to Gina Woods, new grandbaby. She missed a couple of days last week, and I'm going to have my first grandbaby here maybe next week. So, kind of cool, yeah. Second, Mike, the water tower looks great.
Thank you.
I don't know. Have you guys seen the new water, or the cleaned water tower?
The new.
I went on vacation, came back 10 days, and first thing I saw when I drove into town is, look, he got the water tower done. So...
I just got the bill in my inbox.
Yeah. Thirdly, shootout next Saturday, right?
Yeah.
That's right.
Good time. I don't know if you guys, everybody been there before?
Yes.
Great time. Make the trek over there. It's a good time. There could be a ton of boats. You might even see some goofy guy selling cheese and sausages out the back of a jet ski. You just never know. Another thing, too, we had an interesting Grove, Oklahoma. They came up here last week. They got ahold of Mike, and I was, was able to join them. They had the city attorney. They had the gentleman from the chamber. They had some business leaders. Anybody ever been to Grove, Oklahoma? Ever heard of Shangri-La?
Yes, I stayed there.
Okay. It's down there. They, in their words, they're about 20 to 50 years behind Lake of the Ozarks. They think we're doing it right. They love our city. They wanted to come up here and tour City Hall. Mike took us on a great tour. In fact, Mitchell was able to go with us. We saw stuff we hadn't even seen yet. But they had a great tour. We, we talked for about a couple hours. They, they picked their brains about how to develop businesses. They don't have any lake bar, pool bars yet. They're wanting to. They said it's a great area. And it just so happens, my birthday's September 10th, and Kim and I were looking for a place to go. So we're actually going to go down there. I've already reached out to them. And Friday, the 9th, we're going to tour their City Hall. They're going to take us around town. And just, they're not in competition, but a very similar-sized lake. They're warning, learn, learn from us, and we'll learn from them. So hopefully it's a nice partnership there. The other thing, too, is, as you know, here a few weeks ago, Quick Car had a little problem with their water. The owner had reached out to me. We were going, and he was very cordial, if you know Mike Burbank. But he sent me an email and thanking us, and I asked him if, if I could read it. It's not very lengthy, but to Mike and Kevin and the team. He just said, "Mr. Mayor, I'm following up regarding the lift station problem from last week. Being shut down for two days was very bad for our business. However, I want to commend your team at Public Works for not giving up, working hard to fix the situation. They sat out in the sun, the heat, for two days from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, trying to get the lift station up and running so our car wash could operate. I thank your team, and I thank you for making Quick Car priority and making this bad situation as good as possible. I look forward to discussing ways we can prevent the situation from happening again in the future. Sincerely, Mike Burbank, Quick Car."
That's nice.
Wash Detail and Lube. So utilize our services, folks. You got a car, you need something changed, a boat, oil change, good people over there. Nice job, Mike and Kevin and the staff. The last thing I have is, I received a letter from Brad Rosier. He was on the TIF Commission. He sent a very nice letter to me apologizing for missing the TIF meeting. He had an emergency. He could not be here. He had the equipment failure issue. But he wanted to, wanted me to know, and I'm just going to paraphrase, that he respects the board too much to continue because he is busy right now. So he respectfully has resigned from the TIF Commission. So we do have an opening. So pick your brains, especially now with, in light of everything else going on. Let me know, and, and we can get somebody on that board. So with that being said, thank you all very much. Do I have a motion to, to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Alderman Ross, do I have a second? Alderman Becker, he beat you. Motion adjourned. Thank you, folks.